So, welcome Woodbury to your village board meeting on November fourteenth. Will everyone please rise to the pledge of allegiance and homeless silence for the innocent victims? For the continued conflict in Israel and Palestine. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It's just a little bit of a little intense. Well, ish. Uh, we need this. We live in a city of. All right, thank you. All right, let me begin by saying, as I always do, I will begin by introducing your village board trustees. Joining us remotely in his fallacious condominium in El Segundo. Is Christopher Graziano. Uh, would normally would be sitting next to him is trustee Vic Forelli. Next to him is trustee Susan Suriello. Next to her is deputy mayor Tara Buren. Uh, joining us, replacing village clerk Poppen tonight is deputy clerk Jessica Poppen. And he's on, your mayor. No, guess I didn't claim it. But this. Oh.
You should change. Change your name.
Oh, you think I was only told to have seat people. Uh, and of course, I am your mayor Andrew Jagger. So, uh, just had your cell phones off, ladies and gentlemen, which is basically an underhand. And we will jump right into public hearings. Uh, introductory local law fifteen of twenty twenty-three cannabis. Notices hereby given by the village of Woodbury trustees, board of trustees, that our public hearing will be held on November fourteenth. Seven thirty P M. at village hall. Uh, to entertain public comments on introductory local law fifteen of twenty twenty-three, amending chapter three ten zoning of the village code regular cannabis, retail dispensaries and cannabis consite consumption premises. So, let me begin by saying, as everyone knows, Woodbury is one of the few municipalities that opted in to Paris. As part of that opt-in, we are required to amend our zoning code to allow for their placement in certain zoning districts, setting up spectral permit requirements, imposing hours of operation and other standards for the operation of this type of business. So as not to interfere with the daily lives of those living in residential areas. The notice of the public hearing was printed in the Times Record on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. So, at this time, I will open it up to the public. Anyone in the public wishes to speak who is here now? Please do so if they're able to please. Make one, one second, yes. Okay. At this time, I am going to hold the public hearing open. So, we're going to hold it open to the December fourteenth meeting. The referrals have yet not come back from the Orange County Planning Department, planning board, uh, the village informant and the town of Woodbury Board and Police Department. So can I have a motion in a second to hold over the public hearing on cannabis thing? December fourteenth.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, sir. All right, introductory local law eighteen of twenty twenty-three. Non-residential water martini. Notices hereby given by the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees that a public hearing will be held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty P M. at village hall. To entertain public comments on introductory local law eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Amending and continuing the more time on certain non-residential permits significant to occupancy and approvals. The notice wa- public hearing was published in the Times Record on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. And let's go straight out to the public for comment. Once, anybody wishing to speak on this? Or twice? Okay. Since well twelve will not is now delayed till the end of December. I would like to continue hold over the public hearing on this one till December twenty-eighth. Motion, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, just for the record, uh, secret is complete, referrals are complete, and the G M I, G M L came back as local determination. Okay. Final public hearing. On introductory local law nineteen of twenty twenty-three. That our attorney spent hours thinking of the name for fences. Fences. Notice is hereby given by the village board of trustees that a public hearing will be held on November fourteen, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty P M. To entertain public comments on introductory local law eighteen. Twenty twenty-three. Amending the village code down to one four six fences. Who is my plan for definitions for yards? The notice of the public hearing was published once again in the Times Record on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. So before going out to the public, attorney Norton, why don't you give us an abridged version of said law?
Sure, I'm trying to make it short.
Give me time.
Thank you. So, law seems to be when working with the book. It was found that in the law code related to there really wouldn't, sometimes were decided. Local law means the front door side or a rear yard match, it wouldn't result.
Good sense. Right, let's go out to the public comments. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this? Going once? Going twice? Can I have motion in seconds and close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have motion in a second to issue negative declaration on this local law? Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, I have motion in seconds to dot local law sixteen of twenty point three, amending chapter one four six fences, the code. To clarify and clarify, make definitions for yards and to direct the village clerk, deputy village clerk, print a copy of said law in the minutes of this meeting.
Motion.
Second. Uh, roll call, Jessica?
Well, the trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Um, trustee three O, right, trustee Bird, mayor James Martin.
Fine. The going backs to dust. Always miss these local laws when they're done. So, uh, public comments on agenda items only. Uh, the agenda can be found in the back of the room if you did not pick up one. And now it will be your opportunity to speak on agenda items only. Leave to the podium.
Me now, but I guess I have a question for the zone change request. This is more of what an attorney. On page one, the petition that the chairman submitted into the town law, there are no problems with the, with the zone change. What's the supervisor instead of mayor? And we also could arrange a court. I know it's a one on the school district, but she'd say the village of Woodbury, I'm sure. Impact, maybe that their attorney can hurt that having breakfast aged forty. I just happen to notice it media, like, like last night, it was moved and plowed it like furniture. So I have to have to see. Where's that being at? Just felt snoggy. It was pretty good. Thank you.
And before we move on to administrative business, I do want to introduce somebody in the room tonight. The most important woman in the village of Woodbury. The first woman, the first lady of the village of Woodbury, Shannon Jackamaza, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm delirious, I'll clap for anything.
We even C J was coughing, was clapping through a cough.
Let me see, Jay.
All right, I have motion in second now. The acceptance of the minutes, a motion in second receipt, uh, accept the receipt of the minutes. The meeting held October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Uh, motion was sued second by trustee Graziano, all in favor?
Aye.
Deputy clerk McLennan Poppen, please, please read abstract eleven.
Draft eleven, change back to two, three, two, four, one, two, nine, one, through two, three, two, four, one, four, seven, four. And follows five hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and nine cents.
All right, can I have a motion in a second to approve act eleven as rare?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Fire department equipment requests, can I have motion in seconds to approve fire department equipment request thirty of twenty twenty-three totaling approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase and replacement of structural firefighting turn in. Motion.
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I will give you one away. So can I have motion in second to close out thirty-seven planning board askers? Sort of like Sydney, I was in eight hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty cents.
Motion. Oh, second.
Motion by trustee Durrell, second by trustee Graziano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This, this is what happens to me at CJR.
Yeah.
Virtually. All right, fire department membership application, can I have motion in seconds to approve the application for membership? To the Woodbury Fire Department received from Matthew Won't Be Zoli, Won't Zota? Oh, pending physical, was I close?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We not need to be the first to welcome Matthew to the village of Woodbury. Welcome. Our whole business. Uh, the Park Avenue Bridge. So it's discussed prior, the county plans are replacing Park Avenue Bridge. Quite possibly in the spring. Our attorney Kevin Doig has been working on easements and licenses with the county in order to move forward. We have some housekeeping items to address, which we will do right now. So, can I have motion in second to assume lead agency?
Motion.
Second.
May I, later?
Aye.
Okay, the intent was declared in October, no Jesse were received. Can I have a motion in a second to issue a negative declaration?
Motion. Motion.
Too late, buddy.
Hmm.
Too late.
Flag.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and can I have motion in seconds authorize me, the mayor, to sign any and all documents necessarily accomplished to repair and replacement of the Park Avenue Bridge in the village's water murray, the long portion of the park area. Work every.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, new business. Offer dedication. So, attorney Kevin Norton, what exactly are we doing here and why?
This is an application that is actually before planning calls, planning board, it's a college presenter. Uh, subdivision. And it's a three lot subdivision, and as one of its conditions, the planning board asked the people to pursue the dedication of this roadway to the village. The portion will be down on the road. Um, and so when I'm preparing we got to do so and the records.
You're the best. I don't care what Vic Forella says about me, you're just awesome. Any questions for the attorney Norton on this? Anything, all right? So can I have motion in second to assuming lead agency status, status for the offer for road dedication by C Y W Property Holdings LLC Division for a portion of Skunmark Road right of way?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have motion in seconds to type this action as unlisted and issue a negative declaration under seat.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, now, can I have motion in seconds to direct deputy village clerk, Jessica McLennan, to schedule a public hearing for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and publish said hearing in the Times Record where?
Motion.
And I'll give the second to you, CJ. Because I love you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got a zone change request for the old Sabre Grill, grill space. So the board received communication some time ago from attorneys Ethan McCann on behalf of their client pressing his own the nine two three New York State Route thirty-two, or the former Sabre Grill. Due to the closure of this, of, of the restaurant use in this location, you repeat approved use as expired. Therefore, the operators of restaurant, the anti-business board will have to revise who is allowed in the zoning district. So, what we are going to do is introduce a local law, and I believe it is local law.
Twenty.
Twenty, that's right. So can I have motion in a second to introduce some local law twenty? See our district slash restaurants.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion in a second for the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees to assume lead agency and type, it's a type one agency, motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, referrals, can I have a motion in a second to refer this to the Orange County Planning Department? Planning Board and the building.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing for December fourteenth? It's going to check it all in there. Motion. Walk left second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And once again, as I always say, no patrons for that meeting. So, dire bus. Request from the town of Highlands, town of Highlands reach out, requested that they dial the bus to the last through whatever. Thanks morning town Highland residents to local shopping class. They stated their program operates on Saturdays and currently goes to Vail Street and Newburgh for shopping, but would like to change its road Woodbury here. Specifically, the cold Aldi shopping class. This request was initially made to the town of Woodbury. They're showing you the okay, and it furthers back to Woodbury as the roads are in the city with the village. So, do I need a, uh, approval on this, or is this something?
You would need to.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve the town of Highlands request?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Rushmore Estates. All right, the board received a request from George Lithgow, attorney for Rushmore Estates for the opportunity to appear in part of the board to request the extension part consent agreement set in place for Rushmore Estates. The request was received, and so now I bring it to the board for discussion and possible vote. While we did receive communication from attorney Lithgow in his usual form and in tiny matter at about four o'clock this afternoon, that he would not be able to make it this evening. He did, uh, send over I guess their argument in favor of this, or their, their facts on this. So I know I pulled that onto board, I want to make sure the board had time to review it and just open it, this up to discussion on extending extending the incentive for the work of saying. And just for the record, in February of, no, December of twenty twenty-two, the board voted for the one to allow for consent agreement for the Rushmore Estates for twenty-four minutes. So they, according to the building, twenty events that they have filled, so they still have four to fill. Uh, I don't know if anybody, I will open floor to the board. CJ, I'll start with you since you're joining us virtually.
Um, yeah, um, we were in, as you just mentioned, we were in this exact same position a year ago. Um, in these meetings to put out a deal in an olive branch to try and help keep a local business running. Um, and one of the stipulations was to get through the planning board process within that year. Um, to get the place legal and do it the correct way according to our zoning code and building code. That hasn't happened. I'm not in a favor of giving any few, any more extensions to this project. Um, they, they, they had plenty of time to get their, um, submissions in, they didn't do them, they waited, wasted so much time. So, um, until they get their submissions in and um, they're accepted and they have it done as per the planning and zoning board rules, I am not in favor of extending any further than we are now.
Yeah, I just state for the record, as everybody knows, attorney Norton is here, so if anybody has any questions, she happens to serve as the planning board attorney. Is very familiar, familiar with how this has been going on, how long this has been going on, or how this has been progressing through the planning board process. Uh, Vic Forelli?
Okay, um, as trustee Graziano said, we are here last year. So, in the same thing, we acted in good state. We gave them the consent agreement, we actually allowed them more events than they asked for. And then here we are, we're back to very wonderful. So, while I am not in favor of granting and extending, I am in favor of if it's Kelly who can do it and the board proves it. They have four against left for this year, carrying that over into next year. And maybe that will be enough to bridge the gap for them to get this done.
So, did there, the consent agreement expires specifically in twenty twenty-three, whether or not they use all twenty-four dates? Or whether strictly here twenty-four dates?
I thought it was twelve months, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's twelve months.
Well, that's why she's looking up if it's twelve months, we go to February. That will give them two additional months, that should be plenty of time for them to get it done.
Okay. The situation said on their line initially, for service centers shall fourteen half the throttle, safety and pulverization operating from nine twenty-four or all of our people to receive any division. So if you did want to allow them to carry over the consulting for um, standing that remaining, meaning that um, you would have to do an amendment to the consent agreement to.
That's my recommendation, uh, let's run up and just, your, your recommendation is allowing them to carry over the four events to the, to twenty twenty. Correct? Yes.
Trustee Suriello.
Um, so I think I was one of the person that kind of spearheaded giving them the twenty-four events because I felt that that would give them ample time to get this through the planning board. And being that I'm an accountant, I like to tick and tie. So I took the H two N memo from August. When I ticked it to the October twenty-seventh memo. When I was a little concerned to see so many, I counted nine requirements that were asked for in August that were not satisfied by October. Some of them as simple as the applicant should show the setback lines on the site. Okay. Some are a little more involved. Um, my gut feeling is that this is not diligently being worked on because there's just so many things here that I look at that would have been, that are just repeated. Um, so I am not for giving more, I would be okay with extending the four remaining that we already approved to help bridge the gap. But they've got to button this up and get it moving. Um, there are a lot of things on here that I look at and I think, well, I mean, some are more involved than others, but there are like, you know, the, another example was the on the septic, you know, they, it's specifically outlined that it needed a dye test that needed the materials, it needed that the system was made of, it's so specific, you know. So as somebody looking at this, you would be like, okay, I have to do A, B, C, D, E. When they handed in an invoice from the company that just said.
They told the.
I, I, uh, yeah, I certified. I cert, I didn't even certify, I just said it's in good working condition, it was an invoice. It did not, there's no indication a dye test was done. Um, and it doesn't to me look like a certification, it's just.
Well, then it becomes an engineer.
Right, it's just a statement from the guy that emptied the septic system. So, again, like, I just feel like, why was that even submitted? So, I feel like they've got to get moving on this, so I think that giving them more, more than the four that they have remaining is not going to encourage them to wrap this up. So, I would be flexible and go with the four, but beyond that.
I agree, I think if, if we did extend it out even all, it would just take longer to get it done. So now we're floating the window on sports along to.
I feel like this will encourage them to, they've got to talk to their engineer, and you know what, you're paying them. You've got to, then maybe you have to micromanage it a bit and say, okay, well, they asked for this, is this in your submission? Or everything's submitted, you know, it's just a tick and tie basically. Done.
All right, deputy mayor, you are.
Um, so like Sue, I went line by line. Um, I, I don't know what was done between August and October. And let's not even talk about how long it took them to even submit an application because the initial submission to the planning board was on June sixteenth and it was, um, incomplete and it got pushed back and it took them two months to submit complete submission. Um, so that they were on the August sixteenth agenda. Um, the law was passed in February to allow events to operate, um, at the Rushmore venue. And the fact that it took six months, um, our total, other than allowing for a special permit to operate, by and large, the water restriction, the, the, the testing of the septic system, all of that was already in place. I mean, there were certain requirements for tents and the like that were added as per the event venue law. But the substantial amount, the traffic, the improvements to Ice House Road, all of that, the improvements to Ice House Road were recommended for Mazers, this is going back to in, oh, twenty twenty, when he was going for, when, when Rushmore was going for winery. Um, so things don't move unless they have to, it seems, and I think we've been very reasonable. Um, very reasonable. One, and I, I, I think, short of going line by line, and this is on their consultants to say, this is our punch list and this is how we move forward. They think they need an incentive to do that, and I want to see this venue flourish, and I want to see all good things come to Woodbury. But we have to, it's, we have to be reasonable on both sides, and I think we've been more than reasonable. Um, so I am not in favor of, of extending to twenty twenty-four.
My turn. So I was not in favor of the initial consent agreement because I had a feeling that this would be a stall. And like, I'm not saying it's deliberate, but it wasn't incentive enough for them to get all of this done. For the life of me, I don't know why it took so long to even get in front of the planning board. And that is not planning board's fault, which is what I think Mr. Lithgow was trying to claim earlier today. So this is on the applicant, they don't understand, I thought this was off our plate in February. And they would be on the planning board's plate and then we could celebrate having this new event then. That has not happened. So, and let alone just chasing them around about dates and, and whatnot. So, once again, I am not in favor. Kelly, could you even tell me, what do you think in terms of percentages, they have starting data with this application?
Percentage, say what?
How, how far?
How far along are they?
How far along are they with this?
Yeah, you're maybe abnormal. You know, for a case or, well, beginning because they were listening to both internal or contractual type of things, but really what they needed to do was focus on the site plan. The allegations of land at earth. Um, we're hoping that the submission in September or the October being would be more detailed. Playing word did advise them at their last planning reading to basically use the memo that they got, like, like the trustees got checked to go down and they got any comments several times, they don't just address five, go down and as a checkup to make sure it's submitted and it's completed. Um, I'm hopeful that after that direct direction, um, that any of our recommendations would be submitted so that it can get wrapped up. But, uh, from my conversation with Mr. Lithgow and that, and I'm not sure what the nice condition is. I do know these divisions, these businesses may live or roll the E S O. Um, I think they're back on focusing on the site plan. But not many, not even many yet.
Okay. That's okay, I know from our conversations that they would have buckled down. Okay. That's okay. I know from our conversations that they would have buckled down and get things done. They could be done by February.
If they were to buckle down.
But then that means if they would have buckled down in August, they would already have their proof. That's my point.
The direction that was given to them beginning will be.
So I'm going to make this, uh, motion. So can I have a motion in second to deny a consent agreement for twenty twenty-four? And I think that's really it, correct? In terms of the motion I need to make for this.
Yeah, unless you want to.
I'm going to start with that one because based on what the, what I defer. We literally got five no's and two that want to carry it over the four onto twenty twenty-four. I think I would rather just, me personally, December thirty-first. And that's the incentive. So unless somebody else wants to jump in, say, no, I want to carry it over to those four. Over to the new year. I'm considering this, it's like null and new. This can, all of us. So they have till December thirty-first to use up the four, the last four dates that they have. So do I have a motion? And it's while making the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
All right. All right, three, yes, no, you take it.
I'm going to go against because I would like to carry the four over, but.
I don't know, that's.
Respect your meanings.
Yeah, that's why I put it out there like that. I, um. As I said, I heard two that you and Dick wanted to carry over before considering here. Like I said, it was three too loud. Okay. All right, moving along. Tree lighting, Puroni Circle. Self-communication was received from representatives of Rio Woodbury, saying they were not interested in hosting the tree lighting. The committee who has worked on this event in years past has expressed interest in continuing this holiday tradition. Since the town and the village have an I M A together, no fees will need to be charged. So can I have a motion in second to. To waive any related permit fees or otherwise for this event to be held on December ninth?
No.
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Additional item. Uh, integrated local laws twenty-one of twenty twenty-three. It is entitled Appeal of Local Four, Local Law fourteen and fifteen, related to A O P and Rinti Polisavici. So can I have motion in a second to introduce Local Law twenty-one of twenty twenty-three?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, necessary secret actions. Uh, I motion in the second to the village board of trustees to lead agency. Into type this as a type one action on the secret.
Motion. Second.
All right, I'll, you hear, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Referrals. Can I have a motion in second to refer Local Law twenty-one of twenty twenty-three? Appeal of Local Law fourteen and fifteen. Uh, to the Orange County Planning Department, the Planning Board and the Building Department. All right. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally. And it's going to be a busy night to bring food. Schedule the public hearing. Can I motion in seventh to schedule the public hearing for December fourteenth? Twenty twenty-five.
Motion. Second.
That will, all in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the end of our regular business. Now comes to our favorite portion of the program, public comments, starting in the back row. That would be either you or Richard or Maria.
Maria Hunter, um, just to connect the, the village board for three different things and. It'll be posted on multiple avenues of Facebook. Um, town, village, and woodbury, you present the annual tree lighting, our circle, with name. Just be big for helping me to keep the flyers together. I'll make, it's going to be a summer night, as you stated, at five P M. Do a tree lighting. I think send out an email to Santa. I should have a favorable response to Santa about that night. Um, we can have some music, some cocoa, cookies, candy canes. And I want to thank the following. The town, the community, and the new community board, Dick. For doing some research for me and letting me know that I'll be in this interview this, whatever. Well, the fees and bits should be taken care of by the board. So thank you to her. Also, thank us that confirmation for the ladies auxiliary. So they just want to be helping out that night. So I'm grateful to them. I want to thank the highway department, helping out. Properly. The buyers would, that barriers for me. Also, reduce speed with the councilman, who's also the lieutenant, Vining. Two weeks ago, I happened to invite, talk to him and I was like. Looking first and he said, never really from the bike department. We said, good. And I want to do a huge thank you to Ryan Plasby, who's with State Farm Insurance Company. He's been our sponsor for the, for, for, for the case, whatever. So I mean, as a community. Started from an insurance company. So. That's where we are. Anyone has any questions, everyone else can find me or go to the Good Lifter Town Hall, since they can relay the information to me. So I'm thankful for. Get this forward, we'll get them over to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in that row? All right, next row.
Most of that's, I don't know. Um, so there's, I'm still playing and feel actually. Yeah, I was showing them very important.
You'll still see me, don't hurry.
But, um, thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Philly community, um, I'm making this very short, Steve. I just wanted to stand up here and see if it was possibly a thing from the one having farm. You know, I came down, spoke, um, in town, four meetings a month ago. I think I, we got there about a month and a half ago, pre-elections, you know, just trying to. Get everybody on the same team, having meetings. You know, Mr. Burke had asked, you know, we had asked Mr. Burke. You know, we have to be, everybody can get there. Um, we do have a more relationship, you know, with our neighbors and. You just wanted to know that if there is, if there are, because we've been patiently waiting for.
So Kelly, has there been any communication from John Kay and the town board on whether they have proceeded? Okay, soon.
The, when the plans are ready, that's, to the planning, we're going to have it in our room. And I think twice that received, they should be shortly, they should be shortly, a couple of weeks. And I haven't gotten anything, I haven't followed up again, if the board would like, I, I just had it written down, I can follow up with, uh.
What is our next steps on the village side?
Well, the next thing is really that if you can have a board of elders, they need to come on the board as well. It needs to. Issues with the town board, Steve Barshaw was, he got a plan. To get the process. I'd say streamlined, but it's a complex process just from the property owners and the oversight of.
Okay, the problem issue I have is there just has not been, we've talked about this. Over and over and over again. And I think we've been more than patient with this. So at this point, it's time, like, like what we're talking about to move forward with this whole thing. So how do we, as a board, do I have to send my panel or update to start? If we violate those, or do we need to? Is this something where communication? We thought with just reaching out to them, hey, I don't know if Steve Barshaw is still involved with this?
Okay, you, you call the one that.
Okay.
He's still involved.
Okay.
So, and you're trying to end all that that's back in. And I think maybe the direction to take is. We were kind of waiting for. Then the truth of how it was clarified, we're figuring, you know, it looks like we're different. But maybe I can do something together to try and present it. And it is, sometimes it's easier to basically screw you right than to start with scratch. So maybe something like that, something with corporate and kind of getting.
So I mean, that's why we, we all want to take it together. Like even, you know, I. Have a great, you know, communication. We all, we just want to knock the cloud off. Before the kids, the bar shop, like they don't care, there's some people, they're really leaving, like, I remember going to meet, you know, because. We've been with you for one, two years and there's a mind for you, so I. I mean, you can. So.
Okay, Melissa. Because I got the same, I was still months ago. The alarm for submitting, you're not listening.
None.
So I don't, at this point, I were coming to the limbo. And got it hanging on my list of things. So I would love to get rid of it. So let's see what we can do to kind of move this along.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Name, Arnold. You know the routine, I'm a G game, Highland Mills. Congratulations, Daniel, congratulations to the winners on this election. Taro, I'm doing CJ. You know, thank you, sir. I, I see your dedication. I see how involved you are, but. It's the first time I've gotten specifically involved. You know, meetings, town meetings, village meetings, the elections, the ridiculous. But I am stuck at a local level at this opening. And I don't understand why I need to be stomping back. So if we can't get on scene, hey, what would they? It makes no sense. I can't make people like each other and I can't make people your friends. So I'm, I'm back, you know, what we're not. And I'm. We got out there some times. Well, you know. And everybody, we have, we only have two bottles, and we're the same way. To some extent. If not to move right, I move. You know. Move. It's a little bit close, I'm. It's one. We know, the rewards of all signs, you guys work together. Comes. To go back to the issues, we're just in those town meetings. And oh my God, are you kidding me? Supposedly you guys don't get in touch. Okay, quarter, quarter back, we jump, we're. Then it's, it was, it was, it was, it was just, it was just, it's hard. And, and it, it, it's, you know. I want to see you with her. There's some, just the context, you know. It's just a law. You know, a lot of time comes, you know, just, so. On side of them. And all in the same, there's a big issue with everything that. You know, I'm not saying PSA, I don't even what I'm. Well. In the same, we got, you got any stuff that's not going to know, you know, items. What can we do? Is there anything we can do at a village town level to regulate? You know, the, what's the.
Something there's also.
To, 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 because. There's a couple of fires in Zera, right? Um, like. I don't know the causes were exactly, but this is crazy. I mean, I would love to see something. There's so many programs in, in place. How does some workshop, education program? Or every, every place that sells one of these items, they sell batteries, is forced to review. A flyer. Or a short training session, this is. Because, I mean, it, it, it's scary to think. You know, it, it, it just, it's just something you just want to avoid if you can. And. You know, I know, I know cities have their issues. And so far, I believe we haven't had an issue here yet, and maybe we'll stay there. Thank you. Jimmy, it's something to look into. Um, there are known fact, I mean, we've got a fire department with us. Uh, I can talk to the chiefs downstairs. But other than that, is that our planning board chair, Chris Gerber, is also a chief along that. So I certainly think he's got something he could suggest on that. He's the man of the world, that Christopher Gerber, I got to tell him. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? All right, going out to, uh, to public comments. I will start with Rob White.
I don't have anything to say.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Uh, Mike Penella.
Uh, good evening, everybody. I have nothing tonight.
Hey, Phillips.
Good evening, Mayor. I have nothing also.
I miss you, Mickey. I miss you. I haven't seen him all week. It's only Tuesday, though.
Still hope.
There's still hope for you, Mickey. I still may make it to you. All right. Going out to board comments. Seabed. You're up first. Staciano.
All right, um, I had this big, long thing planned for tonight, but I can't, my voice and having COVID, it's kind of screwed me up a little bit. So I'm going to shorten this tremendously. Um. I hope I get to come back and see some of you guys. I'm having a pretty. Heavy surgery coming up at the end of November. I'm hoping I get back to a board meeting before the end of my term. But if not, I just want to thank everybody. Um, everybody I've worked with and I've sent my, sent my emails to everybody already, but I, I just really appreciate everybody I've worked with. And they're a great group of professionals and the village is in good hands with all the departments and, and how they work and, and the dedication they, they have. And they serve the residents of Woodbury with. I may have not prevailed, but you haven't seen the last of me. I can guarantee you that. Um, I don't, I'm not a shy person, so I, I think everybody knows that. So I'm not going to shrink away into a good violet. Um, a couple of things I want to bring up. Number one. Uh, there's a, the food pantry on Highland Mills Methodist Church is very low on turkeys. Um, I'm unfortunately, I hope I can get there, but, uh. We would, if you can drop off a turkey, we're going to be handing them out to needy families this Saturday. Uh, the group over there, headed by Mary Ratauski, so let me get ahold of her. Um, and donate a frozen turkey. They could, they would really appreciate it. So, so with the sixty odd families a week that get fed through that food pantry. So, uh, right now they have eighteen and counting. So we got to go a long way, Woodbury. So I hope everybody could pitch in and kind of work together for that. Um. Second, I want to thank the citizens and, and, and the community of Woodbury for having me these last four years. Uh, I really appreciate it and I appreciate your votes and I appreciate everybody who continued to stick by me. I'm going to congratulate, uh, Jim and Matt on their election. Um, as, as the new trustees moving forward. Um, you got a good group to work with and the three of them up there. So I'm hoping that, that things continue to move forward. Um, I did it. Um, brashly, I did it boldly and I've said this before, but I did it with my head held high and I will not ever do it another way. And I'm going to end my kind of thing tonight with a quote from the chairman of the board because that's kind of how I feel. And this, I think this is kind of apropos to end my kind of speech tonight. You remember the last verse, what is a man, what has he got? If not himself, then he has not. Not to say the things he truly feels and not the words of someone who kneels. Let the record show, I took all the blows and I did it my way. Thank you, Woodbury. Good night.
Thank you, trustee Graziano. Now, trustee Vic Farrelly.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Graziano, thank you. It was a pleasure. Welcome with you and sit next to you for the past two years. Uh, we want to offer you between meetings. And hope to get open COVID and. I'm praying for you for sure, to know that. Uh, then I want to thank everybody else for coming out for tonight's meeting, uh, both in person and, um, on the Zoom. And all I really want to do is wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving season. That's all. I have to go.
You got it, Ben. All right. All right. You want to share your uh home by recipe? This for Thanksgiving, no?
No.
He did last year, ladies and gentlemen, and let me tell you. It was horrible. My wife is just starting on the inside. Terrible, just.
It's with heavy heart that I have to say goodbye to trustee Graziano and trustee Barrett. They have. Taught Vic and I that we came on fairly new and their passion. Has. Been an inspiration. So I'll miss both of you. So especially Tara, because I'm a person, though, I really like that we had two women on the board, so I'm just gonna say it, and that's. Um I would like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your families. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can do it.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Woodbury, for a great four years. Um it has been. My opening experience sitting over here, I never in my life did I ever think I'd be an elected official, ever. Um and when, I don't know. Jimmy, to your point, you watched somebody hold their board meetings, and that was my motivation for getting involved to begin with. Uh the lack of conversation and civility civility over the years is quite disturbing for such a small town. Uh so. I felt my direct communication and um. A pretty reasonable person, good gifts I could give, I could offer to this this village, and I really do think. I am a better person for having served with some amazing trustees, uh including Jesus, who um. He he really took us under his wing, and was a new trustees when we got on board, Andrew was. Andrew and Jesus was like, this is how it is, and this is how it has to be, and you know what? To this day, I we can hear him in our heads um o- over the course of very difficult decisions we've had to make. And some compromises we've had to come towards, and it's not easy. It's work is not easy, it's thankless. And you do what you can do with the information you have, and you hope it's the right decision for everybody. We try to be fair, we try to be unbiased, we try to be all the things you hope a leader is, and I. I am very grateful for having had the opportunity to do this, um and to give back to my community that I call home. So I do think that um Jim and and Matt, congratulations and good luck to you both. Um there's a lot of work that we're what we're doing right now, um start reading now. It's a it's a lot of detailed stuff. Uh but you have really great teachers on this board that will still be here to help. And uh I wish you the best of luck, Woodbury need you, so thank you both, thank you everybody, and uh good night, happy Thanksgiving to you, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, of your light show. So we start by sending my best wishes on speedy recovery to village clerk, Desert Toddman. Who makes the engine run here in in Woodbury, or the village at least. So I want to send all my best wishes to her, I don't think she's watching, and she's been texting me during the meeting. That's too much. Um I also want to thank Chris Gerber. Who was here this evening setting up our new. For our planning board meetings, our zoning board meetings, and for our village board meetings. Which will make it, we've moved into the twenty first century, right? In the village of Woodbury, so I'm very grateful to have somebody, Chris Gerber's skill set. As part of our team. Um. So they say. If you're, if you want to be a good leader, you surround yourself with people. And I will be um. Made the point that to get good things done, you do need good people to be around you. And I've been very blessed to have. Some very good people around me. The Tara Burek said, and let me just say this, they're all my people. Uh Jesus Gomez, I convinced to run all those years ago, do not believe my cleaning, because my cleaning didn't get Jesus to run, I did. Um convinced him, he took the weekend, and then he was in, and that was, that was the first out. CJ and Tara were very big. Um fans of ours, you know, defended us vigorously against our opponents here. In what turned out to be probably the nastiest of the campaigns in Woodbury. But once that was over and Jesus and I were on the board. It was my suggestion that CJ was first. And Timmy and Mary can one of the female. So I'm like, who do I know? And here came Tara Burek, Tara Gerber, Tara Shivers. Anyway. Uh and from there, the the last two trustees I appointed with the overnights. So it is. I know a lot of people reached out to me to congratulate me for winning. I don't look at it as a win. I look at it as a, and this is no disrespect to men and or women from a man. But, and I congratulate you both, and I welcome you to the board. But this was a duck dive to Woodbury. When you lose good people for the wrong reasons. It is going to bite you in the honey. Or the tuckus, or the buck, or whatever you want to use. And on Tuesday, we lost two very good people. Two people of skill sets. Made it much easier for me to do my job as mayor. And now that job has become much more difficult. And I am not happy about. Unfortunately, there's no time machine that anybody is. Is going to construct to reverse time and see if this could have gone a different way. So we will have to move forward and let it all be tough. And I am going to state that because we are not. An inactive board. We have. Local law twenty one, ladies and gentlemen, in my two years here as mayor, we have. Passed almost over thirty bills, thirty laws. In this place, we have the next new well coming along, we have various projects that are going on throughout the village of Woodbury. It's unfortunate that this election became personal, and it wasn't from the people running against my team. So they handled themselves class, and they did a fine job getting the winner for themselves. But it is unfortunate that it turned nasty the way it did, and it wasn't us. So that will not be easily forgotten by me. Okay, so. That's about all I have to say about this subject matter, I do, listen. This is not even one of their last meetings, so I don't know why you're treating it as a funeral. They still have two more meetings to get through, um CJ, I know you talk about wearing women's clothing at the next meeting. So. I think it would be a good time, especially with the neck brace, to do so. So anyway, they have two more meetings, we have two more meetings to have a blast here. Um. It really is a shame because everybody I talked to talks about how well this board operates. And how well we get along. And let me just say this, we do get along, it is the family. Uh we argue and we will have arguments and disagreements, when we get to know, it's written to know. But at the end of the day, we will sit down and we will know what is going on in each other's lives and be concerned and. And careful enough. So, anyway. But no further business to discuss. I promise to receive that emotional second to adjourn this meeting. Model second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next meeting of your village board will take place on December fourteen. It should be a doozy. So in the meantime, Woodbury, be good to yourselves and each other, we'll see you soon.